Okay, I'll follow this meeting to order for the Solon part. I'll call roll call. Hal Bathcock.
Here.
Keith Wade.
Here.
Joe Vandenberg.
Here.
Mark Hoskins.
Here.
Rick Seavy.
Here.
Al Myers.
Here.
John Tilburg. John of Athens.
Thank you, I'll call a meeting order for the Cedar Springs side of the planning commission. Ms. Powell.
Here.
Mr. Hope.
Here.
Mr. Marley.
Here.
Ms. Naprowski.
Here.
Mr. Nixon.
Here.
And Mr. Conley is here.
Okay, there we were gonna do flag to the lead in, but I see there is no flag, so I'm getting ordered to skip that. There's no flag available. Okay. I would entertain a motion to combine the two meetings into one. From anybody? I'll make a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying, motion passed. Now, we will start with the round table discussion on the 425 agreement. Yeah, I guess, yeah, we should. For the Solon, anybody have anything to change on the agenda? I'll make a motion to accept the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying, motion passed.
And on our end, it's not on here, we normally have it on here, but I'll take a motion to be approved tonight's agenda. I'll say. Or I'll make the motion if you can second it, how about that? All in favor of approving tonight's agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Okay, we will start the round table discussion on the 425 agreement. Who wants to start? Oh, why, this is gonna be a short meeting.
It needs to be updated.
It does, this is the first meeting that we've ever had, back when the agreement was done in ninety-nine to two thousand, somewhere in there. It does say that we were supposed to have this meeting annually, and it has never happened, so we're making headway, we're getting the first meeting. I don't know, does anybody have any concerns, things that are going on? I mean, there's nothing that we can change on it without a lot of a lot of dollars and attorney and all that, but we can discuss things that are going on.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking, we have a list of things that, you know, recently happened on our side, there's obviously some new developments, say, more times, we can kind of just chat a little bit about those, what you're seeing, and then I was guessing we could propose a master plan.
Right.
There's not, we don't have any definitive plans until we have those master plans done, but just kind of unofficial thoughts about direct things that were each of our municipalities are thinking and willing towards when it comes to the future. It seems like we have a lot, and then, of course, if we want to have the issues, problems, we have to attend, but I thought we should start with chief colleagues.
Yeah. We do have some maps. We've got them following, that is all. They got, yeah, and then we've got a large one too, that basically shows the area of what is in the 425s. One thing I will say, over the years, I've heard a lot of different comments from people that, well, why did Solon allow this to happen? Well, that's in theater. Well, no it's not, because the building next door is Solon. Well, yeah, it is. There's, you know, I hear different things about that, and even among probably people that are sat here. You probably could go down seventeen miles and tell every parcel that theater, Solon, you know. We do have maps, but there are any, have to look at them.
So, um and here and I kind of I'll get speed to it, and I just, real. So, some things, obviously, you've probably seen pop up around here, especially based, we haven't done anything outside of Phase Two to my knowledge. Of course, the Brooks Hotel. Culvers, couple different auto parts places, we've seen a lot of them, felt them along that seventeen mile corridor and along the White Creek corridor. I anticipate we're going to add a lot more along the White Creek corridor, there's a lot of for sale sites up there, and of course, once the apartments come in, there's ancillary lots next to those that are all would be more likely to fill up when we have that much property out there. And, of course, this isn't technically in our jurisdiction, because it's a county building, but this is
Yeah.
Not a beautiful building, that's pretty unperformed at that time.
First time I bet it.
So, it is really nice, I can say, from the, from the city point. You know, I can see this from my house. I can, I can walk to so many new places and new developments that are convenient to us. It's been, it's been wonderful to be able to do that and watch the city grow and prosper from our portion of the area here in the water region. We only have so much land, but we have the infrastructure. And this has been in many ways, it's a great, a great brought to the people who are developing, I can't go over the norm out, but it's been wonderful for us.
Yeah. I can't really say it's been, I mean, yeah, Solon is losing property, but with 425, that has worked out fairly well. I do know our supervisor has made the comment a couple different times, he has been to like state level meetings, and where they're discussing things, and the Cedar Solon 425 agreement does come on, on how good of an agreement it is, and it was way ahead of its time when it was applied, so.
They did something.
It was up right here in the car.
It was more my time, so I just had a brush area, but I'm guessing there's probably people here that were involved in the beginning.
I don't know if there's too many.
Our former city manager, Ron Howell, was.
Okay. Yeah, very few, but I do know that is came up at someone's estate, and they look at it and kind of use what happened here as a model. And you probably know, same as we do, with the planning commission, we're trying to make a decision today that affects fifteen, twenty years down the road, and that is not an easy decision to do.
Be more expensive to do the ball.
No, no.
We were gonna ask for that.
But, no, so that is, I mean, it has been a good agreement overall, far. Anybody else have any comment on it?
I guess the only comment I would have is, you know, moving forward, I mean, the blue would be Phase Two, right? Beyond the highway. Oh, that's, that's.
That's urban area.
And I know you guys are working on your master plan about, you know, what you're gonna do with that corridor. Is there anything that we should be looking for? I mean, is there services that you guys are gonna be looking from the city for that? So, I know, of course, there's no water and sewer on that side of the highway. Didn't wonder if you guys were thinking about maybe trying to bring that across the highway to service that corridor, what your plans were.
I guess at this point, we really have none looked into that. I know so far, the sewer, the mire, and and the trailer, the trailer park there.
Hotties.
And so far, that has handled everything that came in so far.
I just wouldn't think that could probably handle a lot more, I would think.
Yeah, I think, I think it was put in a lot bigger, what's my, my lawyer, yeah. Yeah.
I, I just didn't know if that's something that the city should be thinking about future if if that corridor goes farther, you know? Because there is a lot of land going west.
Oh, yeah, there is.
That was my question.
And how far? I mean, that would be a question too, how far would Cedar be capable of going without spending a lot of money? I mean, that's, you know, you've got to look at that end of it too, but right now, I don't see any we haven't talked at anything in the future that we see where we would need that yet.
Yeah.
Maybe five years down the road, might be something different, but as of right now, I, I don't see where that's a big issue.
Do you have capacity to add more, or where, where does the city as far as?
Boy, you're asking the wrong person here. Well, I mean, you've only got the new well going online, so I don't think water would be a problem. I can't speak for the the sewage site, I'm not sure how big the plant is and how big it was built. I know that new well going on, I mean, that's another eleven to twelve hundred gallons a minute right there, when that new well was on line. And just knowing from experience of being a well guy, water's not hard. Sewer, sewer's a totally different thing, I mean, your pump stations, going under the highway, pumping back up, water's not hard. Sewer could be a lot harder, water would be harder. Sort of could be hard.
I guess to piggyback off of, off of your question, are you getting on your side developers wanting to put in the kind of things that require water, if it was kind of in some?
We have not had any yet, my.
And that can be ten years from now.
Right, right.
That's the only question I had, was looking down that long line, is that something the city should try to prepare for?
Yeah, right now, anything that's came in, other right there close to miners, anything else that's came in, they've been able to put down their own well that big and that, and so that really has not been a problem, yeah, but.
You're gonna wonder, it's become more of a bedroom community for Grand Rapids, not much else is gonna change for the, it's given the both sides.
I can, yeah, because when you look at it with the whole PFOs, you know, went down in Rockford, there's a plain field water department, expanded their water all the way into North Rockford. There, you know, southern, a lot of pipeline the last three years. I mean, so, I mean, even looking at that, I mean, how easily Plainfield Township was expanding miles and miles and miles, I mean, we probably plugged five hundred wells in the last two years, where pipelines have came through because of the PFOs, so. The water side doesn't seem to be a problem, I mean, Plainfield's still working on three wells that were drilled in the sixties, you know, that ran along the Grandville River there, so, without drilling new wells.
That's a good point, and I'm right here at Plainfield, there's, there's a good batch, and, and I think we often use Plainfield Avenue there as an example of something either side of us would want to save. So, I would use that as an example of when we're, when we're doing planning, that when you don't have a good planted place, you end up getting stuff like that.
Yeah.
When the community grows. And, obviously, I'm sure we can find some common ground, if nothing else, the same with my concrete grounds, but that we want to grow, what we want to grow is positive. And, and in a way that doesn't damage the good parts of community, right?
Well, I have to feel that the highway is effective and natural for further expansion for the northwestern 425.
I guess, what the, the city look, what are they looking for as far as future expansion? What?
Within the current agreement?
Yeah, within the 425.
Because I don't think.
Basically, from the highway.
Yeah.
With Cedar.
Yeah, because I don't think we have any plans to ask.
We're not thinking.
Just to 425 anyway, but within the 425, you know, we're as I mentioned before, it's pretty obvious that we're rolling one more.
Yeah.
And it's, it's kind of just a matter of time, which everything's going in, that's going to get filled up. The, I don't know about south of Main Street though, if there's not a lot left here, we'll get in the area that we have, although there might be some phases. I get my phases mixed up, but the one that contains most of the city here. The confines, the pink, there's a screen.
Yeah.
There, there's some places in there, especially with, you know, potential West Street, we have that property that the city owns, the old brown fields there, I want to create a plan.
Yeah.
Those are all for sale at the moment, and if we're industrial apartment type uses, if those get filled in, we're halfway through that. And I know the city's been taking around for a decade or more, the idea of extending West Street out to sixteen mile. And that, I mean, it's hard to tell on this particular map, but I think that it, it is part of that, could be considered part of this, this phase. I mean, it's just a, I'm, I don't think there's any plan on the table to actually extend West Street, but it's the kind of thing that we've heard, we've talked about it past.
Yeah. That's up, it might be ten, fifteen, twenty years up, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Beyond that, I mean, you know that the subdivisions range from the north of town where Cedar Springs is at, comes in everybody else's green space, now I don't see that stopping in time soon. That's, there's a lot of land that people want to build on. Not so much in the east, but we have brief and market.
Yeah.
We're trying to go back, we do a few developments, plus the new, new well. So, having every direction a little bit, but I'm saying probably the, the biggest commercial stuff is gonna be long
Yeah.
As you probably asked, you're probably.
Well, most of the commercial that comes in, they want flat day road, so that they can or all season road, I guess they call them now, that flat day, they're all season road. Anytime you get a all season roadway, your commercial just jumps at that point, because that's what they need to get in and out of all all winter lawn and really.
Right. And, you know, like years down the road, you know what's gonna happen on Pine Street from White Creek towards town.
Right.
I mean, I mean, the hoard of property, that's a lot of property there.
Yeah.
I mean, that will be bought and read up against all the development that's happening, so I, you know, who knows, is it ten years, is it five years, but I will think that would be some pretty you know, this ground that's gonna get looked at by a lot of people in the future.
Well, and it's also been talk of Cherry Street running out to White Street too.
Right.
It's also been talked of that. Exactly, the Cherry Street extension there, that's hotel.
Oh, yeah.
The Nebra running across the two and I toe across there. There's just, there's a lot of clings.
Yeah.
You know, we don't have anything.
One more quarter in town would be great.
Yeah.
Especially what's those apartments right now.
It's gonna be a problem if we don't have more than twelve, yeah.
Yeah. It was just Pine Street and Seventeen Mile, you put that many houses in that valley.
Yeah.
I mean, look at the last six days with the audit store.
Um, I guess, I, you're, we're projecting what we think could be coming on our side. On the service area side, is there anything that you're all thinking or hearing about there? That, uh, could be going that direction?
We, what few things we have out there right now? Really, I don't think a lot. I mean, people come in, they look at stuff, and you never hear anymore, so I don't know if it's you know, too high price, or they just don't want to hear it yet? We don't know, but, yeah, right now, there's nothing else.
We had all the deeper projects.
Yeah.
We supposedly had a, 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 Applewood approved.
Yeah.
Never showed up. And I mean, do you think that's just a lot because of the way it's sold right now, that there's just not the commercial property there? I mean, because what does the mire have, one lot, lot?
Yeah.
And that's, that's a lot of it, we're, we don't have much commercial property.
No, yeah, that's, I mean, so there's not really nothing for me to look at right now, it's all grass advantage on hand.
And that's what we're looking to do, is extending that out here in the near future, and developing some more of the the property down the seventeen mile corridor.
Because if people come entering out, and if it's not sold, what they could use it for, I mean, here.
Right. Yeah, with our master plan, we are in the process of looking at having seventeen mile commercial two elbow. I mean, and we, we've said, you know, in our meeting, it may be twenty-five, thirty, forty years, fifty years from now, but you might as well figure it's gonna be commercial from one thirty-one expressway to thirty-seven.
Well, and it only really.
It's gonna be there.
Because that's your guys' corridor, you guys don't have commercial property right now.
No.
You don't have any commercial property, so that would be your commercial corridor.
Yeah.
What does the property look like on Edgerton pass the animal station?
That has been sold.
There's one piece of residential out there.
Commercial wrapped around it.
Well, it is, but I mean, is it viable ground, or is that all swamp back in there? Because I know behind Goodwill, there might be a little bit of swamp, but I wasn't sure.
Well, there's probably already getting moved there, is that a pet store going in there?
Can't.
Or a pet, oh, a canal. Because I seen the dirty move there.
Okay, and then you all have the Price Center building that just came out. So, now that's empty, that's nice, so I have that, which I'll go get something in. That'll be nice, plus the land next to that.
You would think there's some viable land on the, the Edgerton corridor, but that's probably still not zoned. Right, how is that zoned along there?
Which one?
Edgerton. The, the, Edgerton going towards Solon. Like the old beacons land.
The right, right side is, the east side is Solon.
East side is the commercial.
West side is not.
Oh. So, the east side, that, the old beacons land, that is zoned, right?
Yeah.
There's the big wet spot in there, but there's good, there's good.
Yeah, it's right next to Edgerton where it's west, but back behind it, that's behind, behind the swamp to the expressway and high ground.
It's all good ground, you just put a road in.
Yeah.
A business park or whatever you call it.
I just hope you all put in a street light, or it's not white there.
Well, that's. That's been the.
Oh, let's just do a roundabout.
And I'm with these people around here. It's been the talk of Facebook for the last two weeks.
Yeah, I know.
A lot of my concerns, I was approached, it was about first of the year, about some contamination down White Creek from the old sewer ruins. High PFOs levels. And down towards Russell, there's some down that way. The old lives farm down through there. Is that correct, and do you have any plans on running water down through that, down White Creek to sixteen mile?
I have a response in my email to send you tomorrow. It was out most of the day today. Peter Lucktrick from Fishbeck responded with some maps for you for that, for the not the Russell Ridge area, but sixty, high sixteen mile there.
The only thing that I know personally, we've drilled a lot of wells between sixteen mile and fourteen mile the last four years that have required PFOs testing. And when you're in the next vein of water, a hundred and fifty feet, like we're the Dodge dealership is a fourteen mile, all those wells that we drilled in the last three or four years there, there's no PFOs in that at all. It's all in the very shallow groundwater, which is the whole Rockford area. There was never PFOs in the deeper veins of water, it's all in the unprotected upper vein. So, I know they did a lot of testing in Russell Ridge a few years ago, and there's very small amounts there, way below any state concerns of the wells that are in there, and those wells, I mean, we drill them, they're all about a hundred, about one hundred and ten foot deep. And the PFOs that was there was way below the anything that was concerned.
So far.
So far.
So far.
Yeah.
You say you are, there is some in the shallow vein, about how deep is that?
Well.
I know it's gonna bury my head.
Some of those wells in Russell Ridge are ninety foot deep. There is a thin layer of clay, because that was a, you know, being a subdivision, you had to have a collect, you had to have a protected clay area in the low one five feet. But it was only twelve to thirteen foot clay area. So, I don't know the exact test results, but I know the testing that was done, there was no filtration, putting none of those houses, because it was so low.
Yeah.
And I think it's came to conclusion that probably Bill I spread PFOs up his fields. Thinking that it might grow a better form.
But I do know one well down fourteen mile, that they did that game.
Yeah.
Because the PFOs level number two mile.
Okay, that must have been a shale well.
No, that's a brand new drill.
Oh, okay.
That was my understanding.
Okay, was that the part that they're trying to subdivide right now?
That, that could be, you know, a little closer to Northland Drive.
Oh, yeah. Wasn't born that one.
He was a little approaching.
Oh, yeah.
That's really one of them.
Does anybody have anything else? Comments or anything they want to do, say on the 425 three?
Is there any way to schedule a meeting a little more often than twenty years?
Check your calendar for nineteen years.
I think it's supposed to happen once a year.
Well, yeah.
It says to happen one a year. So, schedule next year.
I would say if we schedule one out in about a year, I mean, that's a big step in the right direction, and in the future, if we see we need more often, we can always change that.
Yep.
Can we tentatively just say last year was May in March, and if, if working out amongst our respective brilliant people here who tackle those things, and if it works for everybody, then just do that.
Yeah, we can tentatively, I mean, it's not anything, it's gonna be set in stone, if it gets, you know, within a month of that, and it's like, no, you know, something's going on, like we can always change it by a week or two, but, yeah, we could do.
Last Tuesday, March twenty-five is the twenty-fifth.
The March twenty-fifth? Can't really do that. Do we need a walking on that?
I think, I think, we, as I'm, we're just.
Yeah.
We're putting it out there, and we'll, we'll have, you know, medication for us on it.
Yeah. One thirty fifth into December, January, February.
And each of our relative rooms can then, we're disapproving of the need, but we can get to that point, we can.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything else?
Oh, I'm just curious, with like, we've been working in with like sign ordinances and stuff, is there a, maybe a conversation we had to make sure that our signage is, and the ordinances we have are similar? Is there something that maybe just sharing ours to make sure that there's some uniformity between what we're doing and what you guys feel? I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, that's a fun example.
Yeah.
I mean, other things that work for you, you know, just a bigger city, and you're better, pretty, really sacred.
Yeah, anybody have any comments on that?
Yeah, we could send them ours and.
Yeah.
So, yeah. We've done a lot of work with this.
Yeah.
It's been a year and it works.
Just got our re-hon.
Yeah, oh, that's already, that one's the top of mind, but I'm just thinking of other things, you know, that might come up, just to make sure that we have that.
You know, that might come up, just to make sure that we got that.
I guess, if you have, I guess, if anybody, you know, either side, if anybody comes up with something that. They think maybe we need to share. We'll send each other information back and forth and.
It would be good to keep the corridor on the same page.
Yeah, yeah.
Even with like building materials, like like the way that building.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we, we actually went to that too last. Yeah, just to make sure that our downtown sectors for sure.
Yeah.
Look. But that's clean, because there were some buildings that did not.
We could be more deliberate, I think. You know, when we, when we do make a change to our instance. I'll say, all right, let's send that over to someone. And say, okay, here's what we're doing. It doesn't mean obviously you have to.
Right.
And vice versa. And then at least, you know, we're aware, this is the direction we're going, this is why we're going in. You could completely disagree, you could agree, but that's not what we're doing.
Yeah.
Well, I think this is kind of what's overrated. When I have a friend that says they're on a minefield planning commission and they're going through that master plan to fix the debacle that's planned. I mean, that's gonna cost them a lot of money to fix the wrongs or. And I don't wanna see us, I mean, it probably won't be us, it probably three or four kids, right? I don't wanna have them in here to mess up what we created.
Right.
Love them, have a good spot, something that they're proud of, totally, we continue to be proud.
Yeah, we're starting corridor determined in that minefield.
You got it.
I'd like to see us force our sidewalk that makes us. All the way around. Every. There've been way constant, I mean, trying to build a business history without sidewalks. We got people walking through ditches. It's, it's sad to me.
Well, I think especially with the white pine trail, you know, it'd be good to have a.
Yeah.
More likeability in on the.
Well, we're gonna have a hotel and we're gonna have a big development. We've got restaurants and stores and outside.
Well. With the hotel, it is. In their plan that we approved, I believe, that. They have to put a sidewalk in to add if one goes in next, right?
Yeah, they all.
Yeah, so once, once one starts going in, I believe even Solon knows about that. Once one goes in and they all start, they all gotta start laying it down. So, but right now, because the hotel there sort of didn't make sense that you put in this one little strip of.
Right.
You know, this little. Strip of sidewalk, but once the apartments go in, well, now they'll have sidewalk over there to here, you know?
Across the street, they have all those businesses, one sidewalk is there.
White Creek Corridor would be a great place for sidewalks.
Yes.
And there's gonna be a lot of people there, so.
Hey, no.
But. And here's, here's the butt on that. That's a hard sell for me. Because that's, and that is a crazy road. And if you've got people walking on sidewalks, somebody's gonna get killed. So somehow we've got, we would have to figure out how to put barriers.
We gotta hit sound, you can't have them ready against the wall.
Well, I mean, even, even inset, I mean, these people, I mean, going from KFC. To uh Solon right there, I mean, they just. They gun it and it's like, that's a fifty-foot stretch, people stop.
Well, the more thing that Bill out there, I mean, I could see real soon from seventeen mile Pine. Pine Street should be a twenty-five mile.
Yeah. You would have to get with the road commission.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, and they'll do a monitor on it. But now's the time, if you're thinking of doing the sidewalks all the way to Pine Street or whatever. Now's the time to get the road commission. On about lower than that, cause you're right. Once you hit. Past KFC.
Once you think about all of those apartments and families that live there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So that's, that's. You can present this to the road commission if you don't think about it.
Yeah, that's a very good idea.
Cause that's gonna end up being a walkable zone up there.
Yeah, and it would be very nice.
We'll never see those people using the white pine trail too, so they can ride the bikes from that was apartments to white pine trail. That's why I talked about the plank building that quarter two is.
You know, in Harlem and any of those teenagers that can't drive in or in there that are gonna wanna. Jimmy Johnson. And there should be a crosswalk in or something.
Keep it to the sweetie moment, so I'm gonna make sure, we recognize it, but we can be out right over there.
No, we already have that North Country Trail, I believe it's called, that goes through anyways, and so people are utilizing that. They don't have any place to go except to walk along White Creek and yes, to your point, it is a very dangerous route.
Yeah, very dangerous.
Yeah, North Country Trail, that part of the white pine trail, that part of that.
Well, the North Country, you're the acts.
Yeah, yeah, I thought those were one of the same.
But at this point, they're walking down White Creek.
Yeah.
To Pine Street to get to the white.
That's a terrible one.
Yeah, but actually, that's a place for potential collaboration, because um, you know. There's things we could do to improve the North Country Trail on our side. If you wanted to work on it on your side. Um, we could make it to where that is.
Spend headquarters for the L C Ts right as well, so they're not that far away.
I can say maybe they would have some input and like, maybe the health as well.
Well, that's what I'm saying, there might be a grant. They might say, yeah, let's see, we can get funding together, grants, whatever.
Yeah, it's a great idea. That reminds me, the, the land right behind Family Farm and Home, that's still Solon's land right there. That was still solid, soldier active. And that is, I thought I heard the county had some form of park. Am I wrong on that or is that?
That I don't know.
If it's not, if it's, if I'm completely out of base, then nevermind, let's keep going. I didn't know what was sitting township on the door, it was privately, right, I barely know.
That's township.
Township, no, it is.
Okay.
I think there may be an anchor in there or something, split off from the uh Rockford English.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Create. It's triangle up North Country Trail and try to find alternative ways that were safer, but there's some. Homeade trails going through there and I, I saw when I was walking, they told me that belonged to Solon and I wasn't sure exactly. The designation of that area.
I'm at uh Solon and White Creek funny stops, I know we all. Most of much. There was, um, I remember we had a vote recently at one time, they had a wish list, and that was one of their. Wish list changes they were gonna make. It showed me how they were thinking of moving that. Have you ever heard anything about that? A lot of this. It was quite a while.
Yeah, quite a while.
No, this was a, this was a, a curve over and then bring it up, but I don't know if they had enough property to do it. To lower it down and to make it so there was more visibility. Possibly a, a, a traffic lane was another obstacle, so. No, I think eventually it's gonna practice out.
It is a terrible. What about the apartments and their sidewalks? Is that gonna be something that's gonna potentially be heading towards the city? And possible expansion of Cherry Street? Is that a thought, is that?
Um, I know we wanted all that, I can't remember if in the final plan exactly.
I believe their sidewalk right now is just heading out to Pine Street.
Yeah.
And a sidewalk heading towards White Creek.
Yes. Yeah.
Cause they don't, cause they don't own, they don't own much branch. They got the piece on Solon. So maybe they are putting that little side in then. Did we get them to put that section in? On Solon on that.
A year ago.
Because, because we talked about like, if they could put their second, then that would be a start.
Yes.
And no, we had a discussion about that, cause we had them change a few things and give it back, especially in that sort of sidewalk ability. And that might have been one we added with.
Yeah, I think it's definitely something probably both of us could be looking at is, you know. Some type of sidewalk for walking, biking, like you say, with the apartments in there. I mean, they're not only gonna be leaving the apartments to come into the trail, they're gonna be leaving the apartments to go down to the fast food. You know, everything that's down there.
Walking through ditches, it's just pitiful.
Yeah.
I, I have worked with the North Country Trail quite a bit. And I don't know if y'all know, that's the federal trail. And our goal for the North Country Trail is to get it across the expressway and over to go over the state. Uh, Bay area and then it goes north. So that's one thing we probably will have.
We talked about that already, like five years ago.
Yeah.
Need something going across that highway, cause there's people walking. Right on the road to get across there. But that's something the state, we gotta deal with.
Yeah.
That's good.
Well, doesn't the trail, isn't it basically designated down White Creek? And across Weir's Bunk?
You got to get across the expressway.
Well, they're going underneath.
Yeah, we're, might be, might be, yeah, it's eighteen. Okay, might be eighteen mile.
I thought it was eighteen.
Yeah, it was up coming on, and we're gonna now go across it. I believe it was.
We get to.
Yeah, sure would.
Okay, cross uh Division L. Okay.
We could probably do this for a few more hours.
Well, even, you know, just talking about it now, I mean, you know, we can go back and talk and. You know, start jotting down notes for next year and I mean. If you have something that really comes up, I mean, we don't have to wait, you know, we can send some messages back and forth and. For contacts, but um. Yeah, I guess moving on, anything else on the? Four twenty-five dream?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we didn't.
Yeah.
We can definitely do it.
Okay, if nobody else has anything on that, we'll open it up to the public. If anybody has any comments that they wanna make, we're gonna limit it to probably three minutes, but. Um, anybody have any public comment? I'll give you a public comment. John Stow. Uh, as, as public and as a local agent in the area. Uh, I think the city is proper in thinking of. The thoughts of extending sewer and water over there. Uh, the only source of sewer over there is Mobile Home Park. And I've been involved in. Free sales of property that required hooking up to that. And since the Mobile Home Park has sold and is under new management, it's been a nightmare. These folks are out of Utah and they don't like. The idea that there was. Extensions that were allowed. And they have it till March or November first of twenty-five. And there'll be no more hookups. About to that, other than what they do for their own stuff. For future planning. We gotta be figuring out what's gonna be happening. Good information to not leave. I guess, you know, other public comments? Anything else they wanna discuss or?
I mean, we, we would next have board member comments, so we, we do have open discussion items.
No, no, we don't have anything. Any planning commission members have anything on? No, I didn't.
And I'll, I'll open up our planning fish members, you have any for their comment or anything?
Are y'all looking, and I'm just gonna bring this up again, I know y'all probably don't believe it. Are y'all looking at getting the roads commission to look at? Uh, Edgerton there at seventeen or something uh?
Go to Mr. M Dot. Hmm? You have to give with M Dot. That's not.
April.
Oh, okay.
I may make a comment. Well, I have many communications with M Dot. It has been sent to the state level. To determine what's going on. The last I knew was that Jerry Groves is sitting back here simply. So I'm not with the board, I'm not with Solon, but. About each, okay? They are waiting to see what is happening at Aldis. Before they make any determinations. As far as how it's gonna change traffic flow.
So they want some crashes.
Crashes in there now. They're gonna see if it changes. One of the things they suggested might be. Is those intersection sections may become left turn or right turn only. Coming off from uh Edgerton may be a right turn. They may have to go down and do a Michigan U-turn somewhere to bring them back. Coming out of Myers would be a right-hand turn only.
Yeah.
And that was one of the things that was suggested that might happen. We'll have to wait and see how traffic flow goes after Aldis was taken there.
One thing I heard today, a state. That gives locals, fundamental jurisdictions. Increased, say, local. Speed limits. That's a new law that took effect today. You know, instead of being all, all speed limits, all being dictated from the county or whatever. That they're just going to. Entertain, you know, local input into it, so that may make some of the, some of the changes easier.
We did have already got the M Dot. Into our planning mission. And. Not much satisfaction as far as Edgerton and Southern. Not enough accidents yet, not. Traffic through there and. His recommendation, and that's fine, was to. Put side roads in going down, so you limit the exits onto seventeen mile. Um, but that doesn't necessarily work either.
No. And you know, it's not even like all these that I'm even concerned about right now. It's like I brought up earlier, all the property that's past the um. That is still on Edgerton and so. You, you know, y'all wanna get those with commercial properties, well. They're not, they don't wanna come in there and be like, well, we can't go in here because people can't get in and out. So that's the whole thing, that's not like, are they looking at this? Are we, what do we need to do to try to get these? You know, cause we wanna make sure that. You know, y'all are good and taking care of, because that's important piece right there.
Now, one thing we did find out when M Dot. Was there, we have very little say on seventeen mile road because it is a stem road, I mean. They, they rule. We, we can say what we want and I don't know, they may listen a little bit, but. They're the ones that are gonna make the rule on it.
They're very reluctant to put a light there. We've all seen the problems from White Creek. To the expressway. The on-ramp. They're afraid it's the same situation over there from Edgerton to the entrance onto. Uh, the expressway again. Uh, if they have a light at each. Then they're seeing a problem there, the same thing we have over here on this side of the expressway right now. So uh, they are looking at. But everybody's waiting for Lansing to make a decision.
And like, and like what you said, how they said a possible right turn only, and then only a left turn on, you know? That does make sense, you'd have to wind the road and do the Michigan left.
Yes.
But that does work.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Wait and see what they come up with.
Yeah. But we do it all through the state, so we're used to it now.
We were on board member comments, I just wanted to make sure that. Hope you please find that we have discussion. I was trying to stop discussion, but I wanted to bring it back if there was any other comments on our side.
Does anybody have anything else on the four twenty-five or on the group?
I think it was a great. Addition to our overall getting together, making plans for our movie.
I agree.
I guess I'll make a motion to. Close the joint meeting between Solon and Cedar. Approved. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say. Motion passed, that meeting is closed. I guess we have nothing else. Any of our planning. Any of our planning committee members have anything else they want to add? Any of the theaters? Well, anybody else have any other?
You can close the regular meeting.
No.
No, we chat, close out, so I guess if there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn the Solon meeting. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say aye. Motion passed.
I'll make the motion to close Cedar's grand planning meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, we're done.
We're adjourned. We're adjourned.